I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please follow the roll, Laura?
Ms. Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Landwear?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Bardell?
Here.
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Thank you very much. Our mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with support of small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Next on our agenda this evening is Agenda Approval Adjustments, Announcements, and Correspondence. Do I have a motion to move the agenda forward?
I'll move that forward.
Second. Motion by Laura, second by John. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Announcements, October fifteenth, Tuesday, 5:30 p.m. is the School Board Work Session in the High School Media Center. October seventeenth and eighteenth, there's no school because of the Teachers' Convention. October twenty-second, Tuesday, 6:30 p.m., School Board Photos at the Placement Center. I think I'm getting sick. October twenty-second, Tuesday, 7:00 p.m., regular School Board Meeting, Community Room. November twelfth, Tuesday, 5:00 p.m., Subcommittee on Policy, Superintendent Conference Room. On November twelfth, Tuesday, 7:00 p.m. is the regular School Board Meeting here in the Community Room. Superintendent Kelly, any correspondence?
Mister Chair Members, none at this time.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is Communication to the Board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the School Board. The Board will listen to brief remarks as clarifying questions, and if desired, request the Administration to follow up. The Board will not take action at this meeting. Any requests presented at this time? Anyone here to speak before the Board? Seeing none, I think we'll move on. Next on our agenda is the Consent Agenda, which consists of minutes of the September tenth and twenty-fourth, 2013 School Board Meetings, Personnel Report, Treasurers Report for August 2013. Do I have a motion to move the Consent Agenda?
I'll move that.
Second. Motion by Laura, second by John. Any discussion on the Consent Agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. Reports from members of the Board. Board members can report on Board activity since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Can I start with Missy this evening?
Certainly. I don't have a lot to report on. Basically, on the homecoming events, I was at the coronation tea that took place at the, at the high school, which was very well-attended, and the kids looked great in their tuxes and dresses, and wish they'd dress up like that every day. And then I also went to all the homecoming events, but the best one was the world tour. I was able to visit each one of the schools. I went to Valley View, and to Highland, and to North Park, and the Academy, and the high school. So I followed the band, and all the captains, and the royalty around, and it was just really fun to see all the elementary kids, so excited to, to have them in their presence even. So, and the kids got in the middle of the crowd with them. They did toss them a tennis ball, which probably wasn't the best idea at one of the schools, but, but the kids loved it, and the little ones, especially at Valley View, all they kept saying to them is, "Thank you so much for coming." And when you hear that from a second grader, I think that's pretty cool. It went up to then to the homecoming game, which, yay, go Heights! We won our first homecoming football game in six years. The kids were awesome. They took off and did the victory lap with the football team around the field, and there was just, just a huge spirit that has been brought about, and again, kudos to the Administration, staff, and teachers, and students for bringing that back to Columbia Heights, because they really deserve it. So it was an exciting week in Columbia Heights, and thank you to all the schools and Administration for allowing me and my daughter to follow along on the world tour. We do appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Hi, Laura?
Well, I'm kind of busy, too. You know, it's, it's nice to get back into the swing of things, and the weather's been mostly cooperative. Well, let me see. I, I had a couple of things. One, I attended the Individualized Learning, Personalized Learning Initiative Guidelines over at Columbia Academy, and we got information on all of the sixth graders receiving iPads. And they have to get passports, they have to carry them in a special backpack, and they have to protect and guard their paper version of that until they're actually allowed to be actually issued, an actual iPad. So that's pretty exciting. The kids are really excited about having the iPads, and they can't play very many games on them because everything has to go through the school district and what their guidelines are, and they do check, by the way. So they do check your history, so you can, you know, delete out your browsing history and get away with it. So, and these are for the students. The other thing that, that I did was I attended a 916 Board Meeting, and one of the most interesting things that was in the presentation is that there was a presentation on the Minnesota Partnership for Collaborative Curriculum. I know, we take part in this, in this school district itself, and 916 is also one of these partners, and what it is, is it's, it's basically a group of districts that put some money basically into a pot, and then, and then when a district wants to develop some sort of a digital curriculum, they are able to apply for a $15,000 grant out of there to be able to develop curriculum, which is going to be an open-source curriculum. So everything that is developed is going to be available to whoever would like to, to participate in it, whether it's another school district, a homeschooler, just an individual who wants to learn something about engineering, for example. And the idea is to build an entire course curriculum that, that we can, that can be accessed, and you can download either the entire, the entire, the entire coursework, or you can just pull modules, and you can share your other mod, you know, different types of avenues. It's sort of like Wikipedia for curriculum, you know, where everybody can participate. So that's really pretty exciting. I was, I'm really fascinated to see where it goes from there. Apparently, there's Sixth Grade Social Studies, and there's a Statistics course that's already been developed, and so I look forward to seeing what, what we're going to contribute as well. So that was pretty exciting. The other thing that we also did is was, I also attended the, the tour of Capital View, but I'll leave that to everybody else. So, thank you.
All right, thanks. Lori?
I, I too was at the Capital View Tour, and I want to thank Director Palmer for organizing it. It was really a wonderful half-day. It was real, very informative and helpful to see firsthand what's all involved in delivering the services that 916 provides, so thank you. It was well, day, or morning well-spent, so. I also attended the homecoming football game. The weather was a little, left a little to be desired for my liking, but it was a great game, and it was a lot of fun. So that was really fun. It's the first football game I've been to since I was in high school, so a lot of fun. Yeah, yeah, wow. And then I just was at the Subcommittee Meeting for our Policies, and then just meetings with community members, and that's it.
Great, thank you. Beth?
Yeah, I was also at the Capital View Tour. Capital View is, is part of the 916 District, which is a special ed district, cooperative district, for those who don't know that. And so we were able to see exactly how operations go, are conducted there. There's alternative learning centers, there's, there are about five different schools within a school that we were able to see, and I was just really impressed by how efficiently things were run, how, how the staff was really caring and concerned about each student. It was very obvious to see that. And the thing that, that also really struck me is we saw, we went down to a lab which had several pieces of equipment that membered districts, and were a member of a cooperative with, what, eleven other districts? They can check out this, this equipment, and we saw a bicycle that is used for helping students get around, and the bicycle cost around $5,000. So, which, just, that in itself, you know, shows how expensive this equipment is, and how great it is to be able to, to cooperate with other districts to, to use that equipment and not have to incur all the cost ourselves. And that equipment can be checked out, and so that's just one indication of how the great, the great services we're getting by being a member of 916 Cooperative. I also attended the all-night party meeting for the high school that's starting to ramp up for the senior all-night party after they graduate, and attended the second high school PTL meeting, and we have a good group started there, and PTL has not been active for quite a while in the high school, and so it's great to see PTL go on again, and we got them organ, I helped get them organized, so they're off to a good start legally. And then went to two girls' tennis matches. They won both, so it was a great season for girls' tennis, and it was, it was fun to see the girls playing. And then attended Columbia Heights Business Council Meeting with Member Larkin. Mentioned the Valley View Project that we're going to talk about later, so we're trying to get the word out to as many people as, as possible about what we're going to dis, about the issue that we're going to discuss tonight about the building. So trying to get as much input among constituents and, and various parts of our community. Also attended the Lions Meeting, and then I was at the homecoming football game. Too bad for the rain, but I'm glad it held out till the very end, so we were able to sneak it in. Sorry the fireworks didn't go off this year, but they'll be even better next time. So, that's it, thank you.
Great, thanks. John?
Thank you. I also attended the Columbia Academy, the introduction for the iPads, and they seem to have a really good handle on what their expectations are, and the, I think the kids have a pretty good idea of that as well. So it'll be interesting to see how that goes as it rolls out. My understanding is, is they're on a cart right now, they're using them in math, the backpacks and the paper laptops to be carried through the hallways to demonstrate their responsibility, but I know that, I can speak for one, that sixth graders are excited about that program, so that's nice to see. Attended a couple of the junior varsity football games since we last met. The 916 Tour I also attended, and I was, it was, it was very educational for me, I guess. I don't know if I had a really good understanding of what 916 represented, so for me to be there, I didn't get to stay for that second piece, but what I did see, the different schools, from the schools, as Ted described them, it's, again, I consider myself better educated on, on what that program has to offer, and I'm impressed. So Friday was a very busy day, homecoming day, as Member Landwear mentioned. I attended the Chamber Meeting, the 916 Tour was that day. I came to the Pep Fest, which was a lot of fun. The kids really seemed to be excited about it. The homecoming game, again, was a really, really nice to see them win. I wasn't sure how to react when all those kids ran out onto the field. It was like, oh, boy, here we go, but everybody was well-behaved, they were just really excited. They, they exited almost as quickly as they got out there, so it was fun to see. And then I also attended the, the Policy Meeting this evening.
Great, thank you.
I also attended the homecoming game, and also attended the Capital View Tour. I also would like to thank Director Palmer for setting that up. It was a valuable experience, and, and I learned a lot, and I, I can't really add anything to the other members. It was very valuable, and, and I learned a lot of, of what kind of services, valuable services we get out of cooperative and belonging to 916. So thank you again. I greatly appreciate the time we spent. That morning, I, I'm going to spend balance of my time reporting out on the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, and the first thing they talked about was a draft-out line of their 2014 legislative platform, and I'll just give the high, the, the titles here. Twenty-first century school facilities, enhance local control and eliminate unfunded mandates, expand early learning opportunities, enhance teacher quality and retain effective teachers, and provide pathways to graduation for English-language learners. And they're looking for input, and, and they're going to finalize their legislative platform sometime in November. They also had a guest speaker from Bloomington, and he spoke about the Bloomington Schools' English Learner Program, and I won't go through all the slides again, I'll just give you some of the highlights. What they do is something called Pathways, and what they did is, I'm trying to find what it's actually called. Anyway, Pathways, they studied cohorts of English-language learners for five years and six years, and they plotted all the data versus map testing, ACT scores, and everything. So based on where a student is on this continuum, on, on where they are as far as reading and mathematics skills and test scores, they can predict basically almost the graduation rate of these EL students, and, and just, and share with the parents, you know, sort of, are their kids on track or aren't they? And there was some debate on whether, you know, they're going to do it early, you know, in, in grade school, because, you know, on the one hand, parents should know whether their child is on track or not. On the other hand, if they're not on track, then, you know, it brings a lot of anxiety, and, you know, and the fact that students can change and get off or excel, more excel, from where they are is sort of lost, sort of that point through anxiety. So they're working through those details, but some of the, the data that they come up with was, by second grade, they can predict with 60% probability the ACT scores. By seventh grade, they can predict ACT scores with 85% reliability based on the data. So I thought that was very interesting. And again, one of the things they would emphasize was, the reason why they do this, and they, they're going to end up doing this for every student, is, again, to check in throughout their school years, and if some students are struggling to address those issues, you know, one-on-one, or two-on-one, or whatever, so that they can get these students back on course for attending college or trade school or whatever, you know, they, they strive to do. The other, the other point of this, too, was, there are also data, they show that they must be more than proficient in reading to be able to be college-ready. So how the state defines proficiency in reading, their data show that these students K through six must be more than proficient in reading to be able to go to college-ready. So that's, you know, some valuable information, and I can understand as a parent how, you know, I might not want to hear if my child wasn't on track by sixth grade, but on the other hand, that's a chance to address any issues going along. And then they went through some examples of individual students, and how they turned things around and, and actually followed these students through four-year university degrees. So to show, and they routinely show that data to parents, too, who have questions about where their child is. And again, this was focused on EL students, but they were talking about doing it for every student, because they've watched these cohorts of students, so interesting data. The other thing they talked about was maybe, at AMSD, was maybe what the issues would be at the Legislature, bonding, teacher evaluations, and probably teacher licensure because of rural districts and things like that, about teachers having, missing the proficiency, passing the proficiency exam by one point, for example, and also doing something for, if a school district, particularly a rural district, wants to hire, and Minnesota wants to hire a teacher from Wisconsin, for example, you know, how to, how to, how does that work with the new program, so? And last but not least, I would like to announce that Superintendent Kelly has been named the 2013 Art Administrator of the Year, and she is to receive that award in November, and then will automatically be nominated for the Nationals. So that is my report. Superintendent Kelly?
Mister Chair Members, I also have good news with regard to the Arts Educators of the Year. We have once again had a teacher selected. It's Joy Belishas at Highland Elementary. She's the 2013 Elementary Art Educator of the Year, and those awards will be given to everyone in November, and she will be submitted to the Nationals, and we wish her the very best of luck. Licensed Labor Management met, and it was a shorter meeting this time, but Teresa Small and Angela Knoll are once again the co-chairs, and so we'd like to thank them for their past service and what they've already given, and what they're going to continue to do. The homecoming activities, I thought, really represented Heights' pride, and I'd just like to thank everybody that was involved, and it was really a fun time, a great week in the school district. Special thanks to the boosters, who every year put on the, a dinner for everyone that can come back to honor Hall of Fame inductees, and they were honoring this year retired teacher from our system, Jim Galuska, and businessperson Tim Klisch, who were inducted, and so congratulations to them. And I would like to thank everyone who put on the dinner, and Bill Streff for providing the pork, and for people that contributed to the fireworks fund, and as everyone said already, we have the money, so next year will be bigger and better than, we just, better than ever. We just have to pray for some sunshine, or, or at least not sunshine at the end of the game, but at least some better weather. Director Hennickins and Principal Sosik and I had the privilege of presenting at TIES, their annual meeting in the last two weeks, and we focused on innovation and instructional best practice. It was an honor to have been asked and to share and represent our district in what we're doing. Ties has also invited the Columbia Heights Public Schools to present at four different breakout sessions during the Ties Winter Conference, and so we are just feel honored and privileged. There'll be people presenting at the teachers' track and at the admin track. I did meet with Chair Bardell and Vice Chair John Larkin on Superintendent Evaluation, and I want to thank the Board for your feedback. And I attended the School Board Work Studies and the Subcommittee on School Board Policy, and met with individual School Board members. I haven't had a chance to talk to her at length, but Kristin Stunkel came back and said all the kids and the staff that went down to the We Day adventure had a great time today. For those of you that don't know what We Day is about, it's really the first, it's the inaugural event here in Minnesota, and I think in the United States, where students commit to be the change in the world that they would like to see, and so they need to commit to doing one thing global and one thing local in the area of service. And there were 18,000 people, students down there today, but everyone had to earn a ticket in. So they had a wonderful time, and they got back on time, and I'm sure we'll hear more about that from the students. And last but not least, I'm sure that if Don Hoyam had the microphone here tonight, she'd be saying that the reminder that the Columbia Heights Alumni Scholarship Dinner is in October, October 23rd is the point, and that's a, a Wednesday night. It's at Jaxx, and it runs from about 5:30 to 9:00, and if you are interested in a ticket, you can certainly contact Don Hoyam or other people as well.
All right, very well, thank you. All right. Next on our agenda is, the Board will be presented with information on the OPEB Trust. Joe Holmgren and yes?
Chair Bardell, Directors of the School Board, Superintendent Kathy Kelly. Yes, tonight we have John Schutz, and I'm sorry, I-
Bob Cass.
Yeah, I can't re, I missed his last name, but Bob Cass is here to give you an update on our OPEB Trust. As you know, we've, we developed OPEB Trust about five years ago to, we have money set aside for our future severance needs for our retired employees, and they will give you an update how that trust fund is performing.
Good evening, Superintendent Kelly, Chairperson Bardell, Board Members, and District Administration. On an annual basis, we have the privilege to meet with you, to share with you the performance over the, of the last year of your OPEB Trust, and what I can say overall is, since 2009 inception, we are very pleased with the results of the, the trust and the ongoing performance of the trust. Certainly, we know the, the markets continue to be volatile, and part of the reason you chose a trustee investment manager with experience with a four-asset class portfolio was exactly for this reason. We expect the markets to continue to be volatile, but our approach is very, is a long-term approach. And when we think long-term, think of more on the 10-year, 15-year term. So with that, I would just like, if everyone can turn to page three, I also wanted to share with you the other districts that have hired us as their trustee investment manager. It gives you a little bit of a summary of the peers that we work with, and their decision to also go with the four-asset class portfolio. Also shows the type of overweight or allocation that they have, and that yours is very similar to the other districts. Now, your need on distribution may be different than those other districts, that, but all of this just lets you give you, provides you comfort that you're not outside the box with your peers out there. The other thing that I want to make sure that the Board members are aware, what we do is we track everything. We have a diary of everything that the portfolio, that we do with the portfolio since inception. We've provided here, also provide you with the 12 months of those moves, and at any time, we can go back and provide more information to the school district. What that does for the Finance Committee is any new members or Board members coming in will have a diary for them, so they know where we started and where we're going. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Bob Cass. He's one of the investment managers that manages the portfolio.
Thanks, John, and, and thank you. When you made the decision to, to hire Wells Fargo as the manager for the OPEB District, we were in a period of time of great stress, financial stress, if we think back to 2008 and 2009 and the housing crisis and the markets that ensued after that. It took a lot of courage by the school district to, to fund this trust, and then to, to take the long-term approach that was to target a rate of return that needed to invest in a variety of areas that were under stress at the time, and, and you'll see here a little bit that, that you've been rewarded for that courage and that, that long-term thinking, and, and so you're to be commended for that. On, on page four of the presentation, what we have here is, is a dollar-by-dollar assessment of the allocation, where we have the funds and what type of investments, but you'll see two pie charts at the bottom. And those two pie charts really tell the, the story in fairly simple terms. The target allocation, in other words, a, a static allocation of what we're trying to manage towards, how we have the money distributed, is represented in that target allocation in four asset classes. Bonds for safety and income, stocks for growth over the long term, real assets, which comprise mostly of commodities to protect us against inflation or crises, might be precious metals like gold, it might be commodities like agricultural products or, or oil, are all in that real asset category, and then complementary strategies, a very complex area, but basically strategies that are meant to do well in times of great stress, especially if markets decline. They actually can appreciate in value in a declining market. So we have a very diversified portfolio that's meant to be, for lack of a better term, a steady Eddie. You know, there's, there's different pieces that play off each other and prevent wild fluctuation while we're targeting that return, and that's what we are at now. If you look at the current allocation, since inception, we've been feathering in the dollars over time in a measured fashion versus just putting all the money to work and hoping we didn't just pick a, a day and time where the markets were at their top, and for the next three years, we saw great stress. We feathered that money in, but the money really for the last three years has been deployed according to that target allocation. I think it's worthy of just looking at page six here for you to just give a numeric, and I know in the prior page where we were comparing to the other school districts, this data was disposed to you as well, but this just shows your initial funding at a little over $4.5 million additions that came in. So your total investment in this OPEB Trust is $5,706. To date, there's been three dispersments, and so we've dispersed out a little less than $1.25 million, $1,238. So your adjusted balance, in other words, the capital that you have invested in this trust stands at $4,467 and the current value stands at $5,623. So in essence, over the last three years, we've recovered all the distributions and the, the portfolio is, is basically back at what was originally invested. So we're very pleased with that number. I mean, that, that basically tells the story. We can talk about all sorts of statistics, but those numbers are, are pretty plain and simple to, to grab hold of. The next page, page seven, gets a little more detailed and, and, and certainly I'm available for questions now. And certainly we're always available to the board member and the finance committee for one-on-one consultation if they want to talk in detail about any aspect after they review this. We're, we're certainly available anytime to do that. But essentially, I think that one of the, the numbers to pull from this document on page seven is this, under total portfolio, the second item, target return over on the very right-hand side is 5.6. That's a number that we're trying to manage towards with all the analysis that was done with the expected distributions from the trust that were going to be required. What did we need to do? What was the target return we needed to hit over the long-term in order to, to make this thing do what it's supposed to do? And I had mentioned to you that over the last three years, I felt we were fully deployed in this, this four asset class model. And if you look at that three-year column, right now, the performance is at 5.39. And so let's just call it 5.40. So it is very close to that 5.60 number right now when we look at year over year over year in statistical terms, what the portfolio has done. And that is net of cost, that's net of everything. That 5.4 or 5.39 is truly your net return, which is really important to recognize. Year-to-date, we're at 4% year-to-date, and I know to some people that's a little bit of surprise when the market is up 18%, but we don't have 100% of your portfolio in the equity markets for safety reasons. You know, if we want to talk equities and we won't, I mean, our equities are doing very well. That portion that's dedicated to equities, the fourth column down where it says equities, year-to-date, they're up 11.36 versus the MCI World Index, which reflects how the money is invested both domestically and internationally, is up 9.23. So our equities are outperforming the equity index. But we only have a certain portion of the portfolio dedicated there because we want stability, we want consistent growth. And in the last 12 months, we've trailed at a return of 6.21, which is above in the last 12 months, the target return that we're trying to achieve. So the portfolio is fully deployed, it's doing exactly what it should do. We're not seeing any surprises that give us concern. And, and the managers that we have selected inside the portfolio are meeting their mission, whatever their mission is. And so I think that you can be confident that the money is, is, you know, stands any scrutiny that anybody would, would put to it, that it's doing exactly what, what you asked us to do and what it should do under the circumstances we've seen. Are there any questions at all that anyone has?
Questions?
I, I just had one. I noticed that the target allocation didn't include, didn't include 2% in cash. I've just noticed that.
Yeah, you know, and we, we move cash in and out. That sliver changes a little bit when we know that there's a, a cash flow item either coming or not. And so there's cash always that's transient in the portfolio. Dividends and interest come in and they get plunked to cash and, and, and the fixed income is, is just worth noting because a good chunk of that we could classify, you know, and do as cash, investments of 12 months or less. We are highly, highly conservative with that fixed income portfolio. And in fact, over the last three years, we've known we were going to trail fixed income indexes because we knew that, that, that the day would come when interest rates would rise. And that's a very penal kind of environment for bonds, traditional bond holdings. And so we've been highly conservative and, and, and that portfolio is constantly maturing because of the short-term nature. And so there's always cash that, that's there because every month we got maturities coming due in that bond portfolio because of the short-term nature. So we're always going to have that little gold sliver. I think it's probably between 1% and 3%, unless we know you're, you're going to make a draw against the portfolio and, and just, we happen to do this just at the time we create, you know, 500,000 in cash or something for an event. So I'd love to have no cash in there, but it just, with the nature of the bond portfolio right now, there's something coming due all the time. And it's just, any day I take a snapshot, there's going to be cash in there.
So it's mostly basically just, just finishing some assets and then-
Right.
Before you're investing in something else.
Right.
So it's a trans, like a transition kind of a-
Absolutely. That's a great, great term for it. It's just transition money that's coming in and we gotta redeploy it, but it's always in motion. It's a living, breathing thing that's always moving.
Kind of what I thought it was, but I thought I'd ask for sure.
Good, a good question.
All right. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Please feel free, if you do have a question, to let us know at any time.
Hope the good work.
We'll keep trying.
Continue to tell the future.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda, Strategic Direction D, Acknowledge and Address Tensions and Opportunities for Employments and Partnership Between Employees. We have Lindsay Bennett, our Director of Human Resources.
Chair Bardell, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to present to you Strategic Direction D, which again is acknowledging and addressing tensions and opportunities for employments and partnerships between employees. And in your board packet was an actual copy of the vision card that you can refer to. As I go through, I get the mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values, what drives our words and actions, again, is community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. As far as our vision, what we intend to create, I always point out the last one, it's irresistible employment with creative and collegial staff. And the focus of this presentation will be on D, which is again, acknowledge and address tensions and opportunities for employments and partnerships between employees. And what I'll do is I'll present it numerically and then I have, the other next slides are actually the dials, it'll show you where we were between the two years. So the first measure is onboarding process for licensed staff. And simply put, this is the orientation process that staff go through. And we look at those licensed staff that made it through Scaling the Heights in August. Again, it went down a little bit and some of this is late hire, some of it is we increase enrollment and we have to add staff on, you know, September, October, mid-year. And we were able to add on some reading intervention specialists last year. So that can play a factor in it too. So again, we're still at level one, but we don't want to not hire staff just because they don't go through Scaling the Heights either. So I look at that way too. Onboarding process for non-licensed, that's data 100%. So every new hire does meet with HR, except for the activities, they do meet with activities, secretary. But those teachers that wouldn't go through Scaling the Heights do meet with somebody from HR and go over the handbook and we go over the other paperwork that they need to fill out. As far as retention, this is retention of desired employees. It went down just a little bit, but it still remained at a level five, which is vision. Evaluations completed, this went down a little bit, but for the last school year, we added on more staff that are part of a formal process. So compared to the year before, we have more staff now that are evaluated annually and we hope to keep increasing that each year with each group. So we went down a little bit, but we still stayed at vision for this. New this year, actually new last year was a survey that went out. So this wasn't measured for 1112 and it was measured now for 1213. And the survey involved questions, staff satisfaction with working conditions, satisfaction with labor management communications, satisfaction with informal recognition at the building level, and satisfaction with informal feedback from building administration. And the survey went out to all staff and I was very happy to see that we are at vision for all of those areas. So there is room for improvement, but we are at vision and level five for each of those areas based on the staff feedback. So this just goes through, it shows you that for all the measures, we were at vision for everything again, but the first one, we're hiring the licensed staff before the start of the school year and we made another push this year to have that happen. But again, we don't want to, not hire staff just because they won't go through Scaling the Heights. So the maximum score is a five. For 1112, it was a 2.6 out of three because we didn't have that survey results for the last time. And then for this last time, it was 4.6. So it's a big increase, but we were also measuring a lot more this time around. So now here's the dials that show all of it just in this form. So for the percentage of new hires who complete the onboarding process, again, it went down a little bit, but just remained at level one. Percentage of new hires who completed the onboarding process for non-licensed, again, stated 100, so we were at level five. Retention of desired employees, again, it went down just a little bit, but still stayed at that level five. Evaluations completed within the contract period, went down just a little bit, but remained at vision, which is level five. And then for the survey, since it was the first year, so staff satisfaction with working conditions at a level five. Labor management communication satisfaction, that was a level five. Staff satisfaction with informal recognition was a level five. And staff satisfaction with informal feedback was also a level five. So then overall, it just shows it remained at a level five and increased from the 2011, 2012 to 2012, 2013. So that was it. Is there any questions?
Questions for Lindsay?
It's just going to be hard to move that needle up anymore.
I know.
If you're already up there.
I know.
Maybe we need to have a new scale, so.
Maybe we can just kind of, kind of move it down just a little bit or something like that.
Well, nothing's ever 100%.
No.
You know, so.
Like I said, I was very good with the, or happy with the survey results too. It's good to hear.
That is, that is very good to hear because now those, those surveys were, I'm assuming somewhat anonymous.
Yep. It was done through Survey Monkey, so it was just sent out to all staff and they could complete it anonymously and-
Did all the staff complete them?
No.
No. How much of a, how much-
I don't know off the top of my head how many actually did complete it. But we'll do it again this spring and then compare the results between the two.
Well, we need to have a little chart for the completion too.
Yep. So maybe that'll be my next goal is get everybody to complete it.
I'm looking for something to improve on, so never mind. You're doing great.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say, I'm glad you're, you're measuring, especially these last five or six areas. You know, it's hard to know where, where you stand until you measure and get some data. So I'm glad to see that we're actually measuring satisfaction and retention and all those, those various things. So look forward to seeing what it is next year. And I also should say that the, the vision, if I understand correctly, that those percentages were set by the, the administration. Those are, those are, those are percentages that the district has set. Is that correct?
They're all part of the strategic vision card, so yes.
Okay.
All right. And the, the first one, can you just, I, I know there's a reason why that one's the lower one, but the onboarding process, can you explain that maybe just so other people understand?
Oh, sure. Well, we, we divide into two, so one's licensed and one's non-licensed. So for licensed staff, Duane Burkus' department puts on Scaling the Heights every year in August, so it's a three-day orientation for teachers. And it's such valuable information, we hope to get all teachers hired into that training. But unfortunately, every year there's licensure issues and we're trying to get people licensed at that time. We hire people throughout the school year and they only do it once. So it's just that three-day orientation. But again, everybody does meet with HR, so they do get an orientation, it's just not as thorough as the three days.
So just people know, it's, it's, the reason that's there is because of the student population is growing, you're having to hire more teachers or whatever, and they didn't make that first three-day orientation.
Some, yeah, some of it was, we had to hire people throughout the year because enrollment went up. Some of it, like I said, we got reading intervention specialists, we were able to hire those. And some of it, every year we push principals is just late hires because we have late resignations. So that's the one we can control is the ones we know about and telling principals, get them staffed by the end of June. It's just some of those other ones where we have somebody resign at the end of July and we're trying to fill it, we're hard to fill.
They just had all that green and that one red. I want people to understand that it wasn't, had they been here, they would have gone through that.
Yes, they would have.
Ballast that needle up as well. I think it's important people to know.
Yep.
Thank you, Lindsay. Well, thank you very much, Lindsay.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda, we'll move to the action items. The board will be asked to approve additional educational space at Valley View Elementary. We have Bill with us this evening. And?
Mr. Chair, while Bill is getting his PowerPoint up, I'd just like to welcome Bill back. It's nice to see him at, at that side of the, of the table. And Principal Fort would love to have been here tonight, except that he is recovering. So he will not be here tonight, but he is with us in spirit.
Okay, Chair Bardell, Directors of the School Board and Superintendent Kathy Kelly. Yes, I do apologize for missing the last meeting, but I am here tonight and we'll, we'll go through this again in detail. I want to talk about enrollment. As you know, we've talked a little bit over the last few years that since 2009, we really have seen a continued uptick in enrollment across the board. We did see some changes definitely last year, where we saw some decreases when we look at, directly at the high school, but our elementary grade levels are very strong and they continue to be. And we're looking at a one to one and a half percent change on a yearly basis on our, our enrollment overall, which really has helped us generating, generating enough funds to take care of the increased staff that has been needed for that increased enrollment. When we look at only the elementary enrollment, I went back to 2009 and look at what's just happened just in our, our elementaries. And this is where the growth is coming, coming from and, and really is generate our new revenue is all coming from the elementary grades. You can see that back in 2009, we were at about 13 and a half, whereas this year, 2014, we're hitting over 1,600 students in our elementary grades. And I know there's a question earlier talking about open enrollment. When we look back this year at what's happened here, by far over 90% of this increase, which is 150 students just in our, just in our elementaries, are our own resident students. They aren't, our, our, this big increase isn't coming from open enrollment, students is coming from within our district. We look at only Valley View, we really see a big uptick at the end over the last couple of years. And again, these are our, our students that are here that are from our district. And we're seeing almost a 10% increase in our elementary students this year, which I think we're all very surprised at. We were pleased, but it does create some space problems as we go forward. As you know, our three elementary schools, the capacity of the school is about 460 students and we are over 500 students in every single building. Now, at Highland Elementary, we have increased some space there. It pushes that capacity up to around 600, a little over 600 students. They're, they're pushing 550 there, but of course at Valley View, they have just as many, they have over, over 550 students in Valley View Elementary School. Here, I, I tried to project ahead a little bit for Valley View, you know, what's, what's, what's happening in that building? What do we expect to happen in the near future? And you can see that over the next three years after this year, you, here, first of all, when you look at fiscal year 14, you see that huge increase that we're seeing happen this year. And then a little more conservative as I put a projection together going forward, I didn't want to, you know, project too many because we never, of course, never know what's really going to happen from year to year. But we look at what's happened over just the last five years and push that forward, that Valley View Elementary will be pushing 600 students by the time we get to fiscal year 2017. And that's not very far away. So just, I guess, just really showing that we really do need some more space in our elementary buildings going forward. And of course, what we're proposing to do is to put an addition on the south side of Valley View Elementary School. This addition is identical size-wise as what we did with Highland Elementary School two years ago. Here's just a look at what that building looks like right now on the, on the backside. You see that the addition would just continue farther south across this driveway area. And again, what we're adding is six brand-new classrooms for kindergarten on the south side. This allows us to put all our kindergarten in one pod or in one area of the school where now they are split up, they're not together at all. And one of these classrooms is planned to be a pre-K. These students right now are actually housed here in the family center. Again, this is what the prototype would approximately look like, putting on the back. And of course, I think everybody's visited Highland and when you're inside that building, it is scheduled to be, it's actually the same. We look at cost. We're looking at construction costs of 2.4, almost 2.5 million dollars. We're looking at construction costs of two point four, almost two point five million dollars. Our fees will be running about three seventy-one. Building permit fees, city always has to have their little piece of the money, thirty thousand. Some equipment that will be needed, I mean, mainly looking here at some tables and chairs at fifty thousand dollars. Technology and security at thirty, and then of course, we always have to commission the buildings at the twenty-five thousand, and we built in a contingency of a hundred and forty-seven thousand. Now, just so you're aware, in the project we did at Highland, we actually came in under these numbers across the board, so we're very happy about that. So I know we can do the project, I mean, even though it's to be two years later, we're going to be able to fit within the same dollar limits that we talked about when we talk about cost and budget. So total will be about three point two million dollars. The actual construction of the new area is that right at the three million dollar mark. The two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars is the remodeling of the old kindergarten rooms, which we would put into a designated science and art classroom, just like we did at Highland Elementary School. Okay, we talk about financing, you know, how can we find the money to do this project? What we can do is sell some capital facility bonds. And these are the same type of bonds that we sold for Columbia Academy. When we did the front facade of the building, the new windows and the drive, we sold the same types of bonds. And what happens here is these bonds, even though we're issuing bonds and we have to pay these bonds back, what happens from MDE is it shifts the way the money comes into our district. So it takes the money needed to make the payment out of our capital dollars to make the payment out of our Fund Seven or our debt service fund. So really what happens is we get less dollars for capital to make the payments going forward. So this actually doesn't affect the levy at all. We really are paying for the dollars out of the general fund, because I could use a general fund then to fix the hole that was taken out of our capital account. Okay, so then when we look at trying to find the money to do this, what we're recommending then is to levy the actual current lease levy authority that we have at Highland Elementary. And we pay as we go from the general fund for the Valley View project. So in the long run, we're still paying the same out as we are now, and we're not affecting the levy going forward. And again, as the levy was presented to you a couple of weeks ago by Gary, this shift that we're talking about here is already included in that fourteen percent decrease in our levy. So we're looking at fifteen-year bonds, approximately two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We do feel this might be a little bit less when we actually sell the bonds. We have a little bit of a cushion to make sure that we give you a number that won't be higher later. Looking at, we sell these bonds approximately in April, about six months from now. But as you know, interest rates over the last six months have increased about one percent, but now over the last month, it's actually back down a tiny bit. Anyway, so this is based on five basis points above what it is now. I think that's pretty conservative, so I think this number is pretty well, I mean, pretty solid. And if anything, it'll be a little bit less when we get to April. Talk about the actual levy and how this would affect a typical homeowner. Like I already said, right now, this increased cost of doing the, including the lease levy from Highland is actually already included, we're still seeing a decrease. But if you separate it out, so it's separate, our average home in our Columbia Heights School District is at a hundred thousand dollars. So we're seeing, it would be about twelve dollars and eighty-one cents per year change. If we didn't see that decrease, we'd be, they'd be seeing a little increase. But at this point, we're seeing a decrease overall, but it's about a dollar a month is what the cost is when you split that out separate from any of our other levies. Again, our recommendation, enrollment shows additional spaces warranted at Valley View Elementary School. As you know, we are using spaces in the media center. We don't have a technology or a computer room anymore, it's used as a classroom. Special ed facility needs are also increasing, and that's really one of the biggest things we're seeing from. If you look back ten years ago, what's happening to our buildings is a lot of special ed pressure is coming in. We need space to service these students. So we're looking at adding the five kindergarten and one early classroom in Valley View Elementary School. Finance the project with a fifteen-year capital facility bonds. And then levy the current lease levy authority from Highland Elementary School. And of course, time is of the essence, it takes time to get the building put together and to make space for these increased students over at Valley View Elementary School. We look at a timeline where we're looking for approval from the school board to move ahead with this project. This would allow us to then submit review and comment to MDE. They have a sixty-day window to turn that around to us, so we would look at getting approval back from MDE by December. And then put our specifications together by January and bid that project in February, so we'd be ready to work on that project when we get to June of next summer. And then, of course, we are looking at about a six-month construction. So then we'd be available with students in at the Christmas time like we did at Highland, really looking at the same type of timeline as we had for that project. So again, is there, are there any questions?
So it sounds like you factored in this into the projected lease levy for this year? And we're still looking at a fourteen percent decrease?
That is correct. As Gary talked about, and we always ask you when we first do the preliminary levy to do the maximum. So it's everything that would be available to levy gets levied. So yes, the increase from the lease levy from Highland is already built into the levy that you were presented with two weeks ago. And we're still seeing a fourteen percent decrease in our levy, actually it's a little over fourteen percent.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Oh, I was just going to say, if I recall correctly, that the mechanicals are actually going to cost less over at Valley View than they did over at Highland?
I, Mark, I did mention that at the last meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I don't always want to say yes, it's going to be less because you never know what's going to happen, but.
That's what the contingency fund is for.
Yes, that's why we put contingencies together in case things cost more. And like I said, over here, it did not, and we're very pleased with that. I guess, Mark, why don't you go ahead and elaborate on the changes?
As I mentioned last time, the engineering looks like it'll be less at Valley View than Highland, just with the existing systems that are there. But we do have some storm sewer lines and some things we need to deal with in that street that could offset some of that. But overall, we're still feeling comfortable with the numbers we have.
Motion to move it forward?
I'll move that forward.
Second.
I have a question, more question. Do we know what the increased operating maintenance costs are by adding this additional square footage?
Yes, there is a small increase. As you know, over at Highland, we have added a halftime custodial position to cover that. So yes, there will be about a forty thousand dollar increase to our general operating budget to cover those costs, cleaning costs.
What about the air conditioning? Do you know what that will add to our budget?
The air conditioning is built into this project so that those rooms will be air-conditioned.
As far as operating the air conditioning, what impact does that have?
We have not, we have not split that out. There will be, there will be some cost. It won't be a huge cost, just like we did over at Highland Elementary, we're looking at putting in a, trying to think of the right word for the wheel.
Energy recovery wheel?
The energy recovery wheel, which gives us a lot of, where we reclaim heat in the winter and we reclaim cooling in the summer, which actually pays for itself over a period of time. So when we look at the actual cost of increased cost, we're not expecting much new cost at all.
Is that the way it's been at Highland so far, do you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. We need to?
Yeah, there's already a motion on the floor.
Okay, motion by Missy, second by John, any discussion? Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to report, you know, I've talked, like I said in my introductory remarks, I've talked to as many people as I can about this to get their input. I think overall, people really, either they don't have an opinion, I really haven't heard anybody against this, except one person. But I've talked to as many people as I can, so I think generally, as far as I can tell, the feeling in the community is that they support this and, you know, support moving forward with doing what's best for the kids, and they think this is fine.
Great, thanks. Yeah, Lori?
I guess I would just add to that, I spent some time talking to people as well. And most of the people I ended up talking to either were, you know, didn't have an opinion one way or the other, or they were very much against it. Some even adamantly against it. More so their biggest concern was being, just the commitment to the long-term costs and this could potentially be a short-term problem. Nobody has a crystal ball, so that was the biggest reason people were really against it. So I guess I just would share that information and just say two as well, even though I understand the overall levy is expected about a fourteen percent decrease. I am concerned with the overall tax burden we're going to be looking at for our residents. And we know we have facility needs coming up at North Park, and so I guess I'm just trying to be somewhat cognizant of that and consider that.
Any further comments, discussion?
I guess I'll add, now, this wasn't the only thing that we looked at as far as meeting the space needs. We also looked at things like portables and things like that, and which would cost every bit as much as, literally every bit as much as actually building a brick and mortar building. Not to mention the fact that we'd be talking about some huge safety concerns. And the life of a portable is not real extensive. And if you have to put in the bathrooms and the foundations and everything like that, we might as well just build something that's going to last a hundred years. So that's, I did want to put that out there, is that we looked at a lot of different alternatives. There were even some suggestions about maybe, you know, moving grades up into other buildings, and there didn't seem to be much appetite for that. You know, so that's kind of, it seemed a little uncomfortable about that idea. You know, wanting their children to stay younger a little bit longer, I think, was the general consensus. So I just wanted to put that out there, that this wasn't the first thing that we looked at, let's just build. You know, but I can see lots of uses for that space, especially over at Valley View where there's, it looks like there's a lot of different programs running out of there in special education. And it looks like they may have more opportunities there to be able to provide better services for their students if we allow this to go forward.
Yeah, John?
I think it's important for people to understand too, the trend of the growth in the population, it isn't exclusive to Columbia Heights. This is something that's taking place everywhere, so I'm assuming that that's where some of the information that you projected with came from. And I think it's also important to understand that, you know, some of the direction that administration's been given is, you know, let's get our kids back in our schools. And my understanding is Principal Fort actually was knocking on doors and saying, come to my school, and now he's done that. And I think it's important, at least my personal belief is that I want to show my support for him, for his effort in what he's done and helped to create and work to give him the space they need to teach our kids.
Yeah, John?
Yeah, I think that's a great point that Member Larkin brings up, is that, you know, other districts have been building on as well. It's not just us, and freely understand built several new additions because they're experiencing the same growth. So I think we have to be, we have to be, we are, like it or not, we're competitive with other districts. And we need to have the same or better facilities to attract students. And we, that's just a reality, I think, of education. And I calculated, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, twelve dollars for the average household over fifteen years increase would be about two hundred dollars for this project, which I'm concerned, you know, people do express concerns that especially older people, you know, people that their houses paid off, that they need to keep the tax burden down, and, you know, and that's reasonable. But when you think over fifteen years, two hundred dollars is not an undue tax burden, I don't think. So I kind of look at it that way.
All right.
And one, one other thing.
Oh, yeah, sure.
I understand from Superintendent Kelly again, that as far as the operation costs are concerned, the increased amount of students we'll be able to handle because of this building will offset those operation costs. So it's not like the community will be bearing the brunt of operation costs as well as the building costs. We will, those students will take care of those as well, so.
And I would assume that should we have the capital funds available, we could just pay it out of the capital account?
Yeah, we can talk about it in the future.
Which would be an ideal situation. We look at that every year.
Yeah, I'll just make a short comment. My perspective on this is, back when we did the Highland addition, the board and the district looked at the long-term plan for the entire district. And at least at that point, we wanted to do Highland first because the need was there the most, and it was sort of an experiment. You know, are the kids still going to be coming in, is enrollment still going to be going up? And we looked at it as a phased approach, so. You know, the request, we took a wait-and-see attitude to see how the elementary schools fared as far as enrollment. And, you know, yeah, no one can predict the future. You know, I share Ms. Meyer's concern too. You can't predict the future and, you know, three point two million dollars, a lot of money to spend on a. But the reality is, is like Member Landauer said, we're in a competitive environment and whether we, and we don't like it actually. But I think it's something that we probably really need to do to support our students, particularly ones who reside inside the district. And our data shows that the majority of the increase is due to our resident students, so. Any other, yeah?
I guess I want to repeat too, that what we said at the last board, meaning that we really can't enclose open enrollment, that we have to continue to allow students to come in because we have many students in that area that are in daycares and so forth that need to go to Valley View. And it better serves them to go there, and we close open enrollment, that would be affected. So, you know, I wonder why we have such a high number of students, why we didn't close enrollment, but that, that I understand is the main reason driving it, so.
As to build on that, Bill, you said ninety percent of our growth is resident students, correct?
Yes, I double-checked those numbers today just to make sure.
It's not like open enrollment is filling our schools from kids coming from other, this is our residents, our kids.
Yes, the growth we're seeing this year by far are our own district residents.
Thank you. All right, discussion, questions? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Nay? That motion has carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is Annual Report on Staff Development, we have Dwayne Burkas, Director of Teaching and Learning.
Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. Each year, we are required to submit a summary of our activities and staff development. And I know in your packet, you received a pretty lengthy document that outlines what happened at our individual buildings and also at the district level. We will talk much more, we do, as you know, in each of the continuous improvement plans that the buildings present, when teaching and learning presents, so that many different points in the school year, we refer to what's going on in our staff development. But tonight, with this report, I just thought if it's okay with you, I'll just briefly summarize what some of the highlights are within that. In district-wide staff development, we really focused on just a few things. With the first one being literacy, with the focus on writing in alignment to the common core. And I know that that's something that you have talked a lot about, heard a lot about over this last year, it's here. And we've been working hard to be able to teach to those new standards, to those new levels, that new rigor that is there. In addition to that, though, math is always a high priority for us. And we continue to work on building that conceptual understanding that leads to algebra readiness and ultimately to college readiness. And of course, math fluency. And that goes all the way down into our elementary schools where we know a mastery of even the basic things like math facts is going to be helpful to students as they move forward. Finally, behavior. We work on that on a continuous basis. Every summer we send staff to training in how we are going to manage our classrooms, how we're going to deal with our students. And so this is an ongoing commitment in our district. It's been going on now for close to 10 years and we're proud of the impact that that has. If you go to any of our elementaries, you'll see that we have the same classroom management system firmly embedded. In addition to that though, we do have individual schools that are, each of our schools are doing their own individual staff development as well in different areas. And you can see some of those listed there. Everything from writing, the Six Traits Writing Program at Highland, to project-based learning at North Park, Elementary Abbott at Valley View, PLCs at professional learning communities at Columbia Academy and Avis Strategies and School Climate at the high school. The big thing though, that I think really was new for us this year with the addition now of a staff development coordinator was a summer professional development program. It was intensive, very focused, and we believe very successful. We were able to offer close to 1,000 hours of staff development to teachers that included a writing institute, flipped math lesson development, personalized learning, project-based learning, Avis Strategies, lots of work with math, positive school climate and professional learning communities and much more actually. So we're pleased with what's taking place in the summer. The one thing that I would add there is the, really maybe one of the most important things with this is it does not require us to pull teachers from classrooms. So our teachers are able to stay. That's one of our goals this year, that we keep teachers as much as possible in front of their kids. Staff development as much as possible. We'll wait to fine times and we do not have to pull them. So with the report that you see tonight that we are submitting, we are, we will be back to talk much more about what's currently going on, about what our goals are at the district level, at the building levels. But tonight I'm here to just ask for your approval of that report and so that we can submit it to MDE.
All right.
Make a motion.
Motion by Missy, second by Ted. Any discussion, questions?
Is everything accurate in the report?
Everything's accurate in the report, yes. Thank you.
All right, and it's required by MDE every year?
Yes, yes it is, yeah.
I guess I just want to say that as far as generally with staff development, when you look at the mission that's on the wall, I hope our staff development is helping us forward, you know, to achieving that mission. So that's just my comment. Most, the districts that I've seen that are highly performing align everything to their mission, including staff development, and I think that's a wise thing to do.
Yeah, I'm just looking at it there and I'm looking at those last two words, lifelong success. I believe our goal is college and career readiness and that we do provide students with the tools that they need to find that success and that our teachers have the tools to teach them.
All right. Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion is carried. Thanks, Dwayne. All right. Next on our agenda is Assurance of Compliance with State and Federal Law Prohibiting Discrimination. Dwayne Burkus and Nicole Hellby.
Chairman Mardell, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I'm here to ask for your approval. This is a federal and state law requirement that every school district fill out an assurance of compliance with federal and state laws regarding discrimination. So we very carefully, more than annually, go over to ensure that we're doing that through our policies, school board policies and procedures. But once a year, we have to sign it and have the board approved and submit it to MDE.
All right. Do we have a motion on this? Motion by Ted, second by Laura. Any discussion? Yeah?
I just want to say to the public, there are 17 different laws that are referenced here that we have to comply with. So we are heavily regulated as a district.
We are. Any other questions, discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. All right. At this time, the board will be moving into closed session in accordance with Minnesota statute, section 13D point 03. The board will meet in closed session for an item on the agenda for the purpose of discussion, discussing negotiation strategy. All right. We are now back in open session. We at approximately 8:45 PM. And we are now returned to open session from the closed session to discuss negotiation strategy with the teacher's contract. All right. Last agenda item is board summary discussion of superintendent's evaluation. The board chair will give a summary of discussion on September 24th regarding the superintendent's evaluation. I'll just read what we prepared, Mr. Larkin and I prepared. And it was based on, well, it'll get into the details. All members of the school board were sent an evaluation survey to survey the superintendent's performance in the last school year. Each school board member submitted a complete survey anonymously to the Director of Human Resources, who then consolidated all the results into a single report. At the last regular school board meeting, the board met in closed session for the purpose of the superintendent's performance review as allowed by statute, Minnesota statute 13D point 05, sub-paragraph 3A. Copy of the consolidated survey results was given to each board member for review and discussion. Superintendent was not present during the closed session. The request of superintendent, and according to past practice, the vice chair and chair of the school board met with superintendent on the afternoon of October 2nd, 2013, to discuss the results of the school board's performance evaluation of the superintendent. Consolidated results were discussed for each of the questions, including all the written comments submitted by board members as well as any pertinent discussion points from the closed session. The survey consisted of 23 questions developed from the superintendent's description of her duties and responsibilities as set by the board. Each of the survey questions had a rating scale and a written comments section. The ratings were exceptional performance, exceeds standards, meets standards, needs improvement and below standards. Each board member could also choose not enough information if the board member decided they did not have enough information to select a performance rating. Lastly, the survey provided space for any additional written feedback from any board member if they wish to comment on any topic related to the superintendent's performance. All comments in this section were also discussed with the superintendent. District Leo Council was consoled as to requirements of the summary prepared for the public. The summarized results are as follows. Establishes and manages the educational and operational priorities of the district. Majority of the board members voted exceeds standards or better. Provides overall leadership for the district's educational programs. A majority exceeds standards or better. Defines the educational needs of the district to the board and recommends annual staffing. Majority exceeds standards or better. Assists board with the recommendations for newer vice policies and enforces school board policies. Majority meets standards or better. Develops and implements plans to implement the goals of the board. Majority exceeds standards or better. Works with the board chair to set agendas for board meetings, include background information. Majority exceeds standards or better. Supervises district resources and monitors revenue and expenditures. Majority exceeds standards. Oversees district financial operations and presents budget plans of financial items to board. Majority exceeds standards or better. Works with the board, staff and Leo Council in determining collective bargaining goal strategy and objective. Majority meets standards or better. Assumes responsibility for administration of terms with employee groups and makes recommendation for practices and salary structure. Majority meets standards or better. Oversees all personnel decisions relating to administrative and structural and district staff. Majority exceeds standards. Manages staff, including rewarding and discipling and evaluates performance. Half of the board chose not enough information. Establishes professional and respectful working relationship with school staff. Majority exceeds standards or better. Serves as liaison between the community and district. Majority meets standards or better. Ensures services are delivered consistent with the community expectations. Majority meets standards or better. Serves and represents district on committees and professional organizations. Majority exceeds standard or better. Maintains effective relationships with government agencies in order to promote the best interests of the community and the school district. Majority exceeds standards or better. Oversees district enrollment practices. Majority meets standards. Oversees district responsibility for participation and integration districts. Majority exceeds standards. Manages school district operations, evaluates results being achieved, takes corrective action when needed, oversees any operating policy changes. Majority meets standards or better. Provides leadership to strategic planning process. Majority exceeds expectations. Develops and implements plans to accomplish core priorities. Majority meets standards or better. Provides linkages between the community as expressed by the board and actual work performed by members of the organization. Majority exceeds expectations. There was one question where there was at least one vote under needs improvement and four questions where there was at least one vote under not enough information. There were no votes under the category of below standards. And that concludes my evaluation. All right? Our evaluation, I should say, not mine. All right. Four topics.
Oh, I just have one because I keep forgetting to mention it. 916 actually just welcomed a new member. Forest Lake is going to adjust, I believe they just voted to participate in, in the 916 district. And one of the wonderful advantages of that is first of all, they're already using the services, so that's not really going to be an issue. But it will also decrease some of our obligations because that cost will now be spread out amongst 11 districts. And then there is one other district that signed on, Hudson, Wisconsin. Although they don't have any voting rights on the board, they actually decided to become a full member because they were bringing most of their children over here to Minnesota to participate. So I just, I kept forgetting to share that and I do apologize. I thought that was actually kind of cool that we have an out-of-state district. You know, that's, that's pretty neat. They're coming here for good education. Part of the reasons I moved to Minnesota many, many years ago.
Thank you. Any other board, yeah, John?
Just real quickly, just wanted to thank everybody that came to the fire department open house. The weather was probably the absolute worst it could have been. But it was a huge turnout. We had probably close to 500 people that showed up. And one of the things that was noted by more than one person, and I don't know if it was the Thursday folders or whatever, but there was just, there was a ton of families, young kids, things. I mean, and that's truly the target, that market that we're looking for is the fire prevention, the education. So in spite of the rain, it started right at 11 o'clock when the open house did and it quit about 2:30 when our open house ended. We still had people coming in, enroll, so it was really nice. So thank you, everybody that showed up for that. The only other thing I have is, is I guess I would like to make a suggestion for a work session topic. I know that we, at our last meeting, we had decided on the out-of-state travel. And I think that we need to sit down as a group and decide how we're going to figure out that rotation and make some decisions so that, I know that Superintendent Kelly had mentioned that there's some urgency to that for the early bird piece. So I think maybe if, I don't know how, if that's okay, if we can try and get that on, but.
It's already on?
It is. Okay, well then, great minds think alike. So maybe as a group, we try to think of a good, solid, fair way to rotate through that so that we can get that going for her.
It should be pretty easy.
I think so. Thanks, that's it.
No? Going once, going twice?
I guess, I'm curious how WMAP is going. Is there, are there still legal issues that are?
There are still legal issues going on, yeah. And I'm not sure if there was a, but there's been some changes and stuff that are happening.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no more?
Well, I guess what, I just, minor point, we can't just, for the public, we can't decide anything officially at a work session. We can discuss things, but we can't take formal votes.
Right, you regarding the?
Regarding the travel.
Oh, I agree. And I think, as I said, come up with ideas so we can have a good discussion on how we would like to see it done and then bring something back.
We're going to have to do an actual policy for that? I imagine we are, aren't we?
Not necessarily a policy, but you would want to recommend to the superintendent your procedures. I think it's just procedure.
It's a procedure. Yeah, I was gonna, okay, okay, good.
All right. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. We'll adjourn at 9:55. We'll adjourn at 9:55.